Clerk, would you do the roll call?
Counselor Downer?
Here.
Counselor Butler?
Here.
Counselor Lowe?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Present.
Mayor Janice?
Present.
Counselor Rutter?
Here.
Counselor Hartman?
Here.
Thank you. Has anyone looked over the agenda and the consent agenda? And do we have approval of the final agenda?
Move to approve the final agenda?
I will second that.
Thank you. We have two proclamations for tonight. The first one being Teachers Week. Since this is the same night as the school board meeting, is there anybody here from the school district? Okay, let me go ahead and read this out loud. Whereas, teaching is one of the honorable professions. Educators touch the lives of every one of us, their contributions to guiding and protecting, nurturing and supporting our precious students, investing themselves in the well-being and the progress of their students. And whereas, these contributions have an immeasurable impact on youth and families in our community. And whereas, the official history of Teacher Appreciation Week dates back to 1953, when First Lady Eleanor Roosevelt persuaded Congress that there needed to be a specific day to recognize teachers. And whereas, in 1980, the National Educators Association joined with the Kansas and Indiana State Boards of Education to begin to lobby Congress to have the day nationally recognized. And whereas, our National Teacher Appreciation Day and National Teacher Appreciation Week, we remember the tremendous debt of gratitude owed to educators everywhere, who helped define us as individuals and as a country, and to all that they are doing to light the way forward for our families and our communities. And whereas, we remember the tremendous debt of gratitude owed to educators everywhere, who helped us, hmm, as individuals and country, and all that they are doing to light the way forward. I apologize, it's written twice. And therefore, I, Brandon Janacek, our mayor, Mayor of the City of Squim, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize May 6th through 10th, 2024, as Teacher Appreciation Week. I call upon our community to recognize the hard work and dedication of our teachers and support teachers by being positive with them throughout the year, appreciating a robust and modern educational system, volunteering in the classroom and on the playground, supporting the local parent-teacher association during big events. Signed on this 13th day of May 2024, Brandon Janacek, our mayor. Thank you very much. The second proclamation is for Police Officers Memorial Week, which also falls during Peace Week. Whereas, by joint resolution of Congress in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation designating May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. Whereas, the President of the United States proclaimed on May 10th, 2024, declaring May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 12th through May 18th, 2024, as Police Week. The members of the law enforcement agency of the City of Squim have played an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Squim since the department was established in 1913. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems and duties and responsibility of the police department and that our members of our police department recognize their duty to serve people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas, the police department of Squim has grown to become a modern, award-winning agency, recognized as a leader in small-city policing, which provides a vital police service covering not just enforcement, but leadership in education and prevention and community outreach. Whereas, according to the recent community survey, 85% of Squim residents are satisfied or very satisfied with their overall feeling of safety in the city, which is far above the national and the regional average. Whereas, local police protection was ranked fourth in the city services that should receive the most emphasis in the next two years in the community survey, indicating the importance of the police department to Squim residents. Now, therefore, I, this is written by Brandon Janacek, Mayor of the City of Squim, call upon all citizens of Squim and all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 12th through 18th, 2024, as Police Week, to recognize that police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have endangered, I'm sorry, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and, in doing so, have established for themselves an enduring reputation for preserving the rights and ensuring the safety of all citizens. I further call upon the citizens of Squim to observe Wednesday, May 15th, 2024, as Peace Officer Memorial Day, to honor the police officers who, through their courageous deeds, has lost their lives or become disabled in the performance of their duty, especially our fallen local heroes, homicide victim Deputy Sheriff Wallace E. Davis in the year 2000 of the Clallum County Sheriff's Office, and homicide victim U.S. Forest Service Officer Christine Fairbanks in 2008. Signed on this 13th day of May 2024, for the mayor, Brandon Janacek. You may clap.
I'll keep it brief. You got me in the feels a little bit there, Kathy, so you threw me off. But no, just thanking the council. And I like to take this opportunity every year to thank the community because it's sometimes a very thankless job. And I realize how lucky we are in Squim to have people that support us as much as they do. Makes it a desirable place to work and it makes really motivating for us to go out there and, as we say, commit law enforcement. So, thank you and thank the citizens. And I would thank our officers who intended to be here, but they are literally handcuffing someone after a road rage incident right now. So I will definitely pass this on to them. So, thank you again.
Madam Chair, I have one quick point of order regarding procedure. During the approval of the final agenda, we motioned and seconded, but we did not actually vote.
Would you guys like to vote on it right this minute? Proceed. Clerk, would you call the roll vote?
On approving tonight's final agenda, Counselor Downer?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Sorry. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Janice?
Yes.
Counselor Rutter?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Yes.
Motion passed, unanimous.
Thank you. This is the time for public comment, clerk. Thank you, Rachel.
The public comment sheet will be collected for those attending in person. It's located over here on the table. Comments will be taken, every other one, from those attending virtually, by phone, or in person. For individuals attending in person, please take a moment to silence your cell phones. For those attending virtually or by phone, if you would like to provide public comment, please now press the Raise Your Hand icon, or if you're on the phone, press star nine. Each person will have three minutes to speak on any topic, and there will be a timer visible on the screen. A total of 30 minutes will be permitted to provide public comment. Please state your name and if you are representing an organization. Again, for those of you virtual or in person, please now press the Raise Your Hand icon or star nine. Anthony, do we have anyone virtual who would like to speak at this time?
We have no hands raised from the virtual audience. Nope, one did just shoot up. Okay, this is one of our call-in folks. If you press star nine to unmute yourself, you should now be able to address the council. Call-in user, the user that is joining us via the phone. One more chance. Oh, there you go. You may now address the council.
Sorry about that. You and the little machine was talking over one another and I didn't get everything. My apologies. All right, good evening, counselors. I am Doug Wright. I live in Hendrickson Community in Squim. I would like to address Agenda Item 9C, the Proposed Noise Control Ordinance, SMC Chapter 8.32. Reference to real property in this proposed ordinance excludes hundreds of tax-paying homeowners in Squim. Ask that you amend the verbiage to reflect that which is in SMC 20.01, regarding public notice with regard to manufactured homes and condominiums. These tax-paying homeowners also deserve the protection of a noise ordinance. Squim deserves this noise ordinance. It's long overdue. And I thank the counselors for their service to our community. Thank you very much.
I have a point of clarification. Caller, can you state where that was again that you were referencing?
Are you talking about the public notice?
Correct, yeah. What were you looking against? Sorry, I'm trying to look it up. 9C.
It's SMC 20.01. It was for a public notice that was switched to include manufactured homes and condominiums instead of just real property owners. These folks were excluded until that change was made. And I would suggest the same be done with the Chapter 8.32.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now proceed with a public comment in person. Debbie, would you like to address the council?
Good evening, Mayor Janice and City Council of Squim. It's my pleasure to be here. I'm Debbie Soderstrom. I'm representing the Squim City Band. And you will be reviewing some lease agreement information this evening that we're looking forward to finalizing with the city. Just a little bit of background history. I think most of you are aware of the James Center for the Performing Arts in the water reuse park. And back in 2005, the band had decided that they needed a home base in which to rehearse and to perform. And they built that facility with money that they raised and then donated it to the city. And we've been using that facility ever since. During the COVID pandemic, we realized that the room that we were using for our rehearsals was just too small and it would not facilitate regular rehearsals at that, you know, anytime soon, if ever. So we decided that we needed to build an addition of a rehearsal hall. And the rehearsal hall was completed last April. We've been in there for about a year and we're now finalizing our lease agreement with the city and turning over that building to the city. That is a $1.4 million facility that the band raised the money for and had built. And then, and we're turning it over to the city. So we're really excited about this. It's a wonderful community facility. And we're hoping that a lot of musical organizations from in and out of the area will be wanting to use that facility. And just, it's a great place. And we want to hopefully get finalizing the lease agreement this evening that we've been working on with the city for the last 30 months. So it's kind of nice to be able to work these things out. And we're excited to continue partnering with the city on the arts programs. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anthony, is there anyone else online that's wishing to speak at this time?
No other hands raised.
Thank you. Next up is Francine.
Good evening. It's nice to be here. My name is Francine. I live kind of sort of east of town. I travel West Squim Bay Road almost every single day, once, twice. It's come down to where no one is paying attention. No one is doing 20, except maybe me and a select few others. There is a daycare. Three weeks ago, I had to stop dead because there was a child that I didn't know was going to run to the street or not. Being a former school bus driver, I look for everything. And this is beginning to be really ridiculous. It's gone on for several years now. And something needs to get done. And it shouldn't take a child getting killed. It shouldn't take a bad accident because I'm doing 20 and somebody wants to pass me in a no-pass zone, in a zone where, why do you need to pass? Makes no sense. I've been passed three times. I had a guy the other day flash his lights at me because I was doing 20 miles an hour, which wasn't fast enough for him to make a left-hand turn on road for road. It's common sense. And it's gotten worse in the last few years. And I am scared to death that it's going to take a death, and it shouldn't happen. Can we put up some lights telling these people they're going too fast? Can we stripe the dotted line? Because there's no reason that somebody should pass me in front of a daycare. It's common sense, and it's getting old. I'm tired of people running up on me, getting mad because I'm doing the speed limit. You do this in front of your schools, but you won't do it in front of a daycare? They don't even look. And I'm talking 18-wheelers all the way down to the little cars. I see this every day. I stood out there with Brandon and showed him. This is how bad it's gotten. And it's getting worse. So I'm just asking for help. I don't work at that daycare. I don't have children in that daycare. I'm concerned for their safety. And it shouldn't take me to do it, but I'm doing it. I talked to them and I said, I will go talk to them. Unfortunately, they're having a meeting today. So I'm here in place for them. So please, can somebody do something? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I see that no one else online is wishing to speak at this time. So next up is Justin.
Okay, counselors, staff, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm here on behalf of the Squim Community Orchestra. I'm Justin Knobel, current board president. I'll be, I'd like to make a couple of comments on Agenda Item 9E, which is rental fees for Swisher Hall, and also to express my support for the Squim City Band. And thank you for continuing to work with them and us over the years. Squim Community Orchestra is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We've been around since 2012. We've rehearsed in Swisher Hall the entire time that we've been in existence. The city band has been just an excellent partner for us, helping us get off the ground and continue to operate in a self-sustaining way. So we have currently two programs. We have an adult program, which has been around, no, actually, both have been around from the beginning. We have an adult ensemble, which is about 50 members when we're going full strength. But importantly, we also have a youth program where, as you know, there is no strings education in public schools in Squim. And so to fill that gap, our organization hires professional strings instructors to do after-school programs for K through 12, well, not K, roughly third grade through 12. Basically, as soon as they're old enough to hold up an instrument. We provide rental instruments. Actually, they're not rented, they're loaned, free of charge. And it's very important to us that we provide these services at as low of a cost as possible to the participants so that it's accessible to everybody and we turn no one away. So what I would ask with the new, with the new arrangements with Swisher Hall, is that as you consider fee schedules and particularly scheduling, to consider that there are, you know, there's some longstanding patterns of use in that facility that we've had and kind of built the program around that. And particularly with the children, they're not especially flexible on scheduling. And so, and then the other issue for us is the cost. Of course, we're, you know, the rates that are in there may not seem like they're all that much, but we have a very, very, very tight budget. And we, like I said, we try to keep the cost to our membership as low as possible. And particularly for the kids, historically, as we've worked with the city band in the past, we've had a flat rate per month, which worked real well, particularly for the kids. The adults meet once a week, but the kids have several classes a week. And so moving to a situation where we need to pay for blocks of time, four-hour blocks, increases that cost of the kids' program disproportionately to the adults. And so I would just ask, as you begin to consider that fee schedule and the scheduling proposed in Agenda Item 9E, that you consider those impacts. So, but thank you for continuing to work with us and being part of that beautiful facility.
Justin, may I ask you a question real quick? I know we don't usually do this. Do you want us to pass that or not? The fee schedule?
There are, there are some things that would make it work a lot better for us, particularly around the scheduling blocks and the four-hour minimum blocks. You know, essentially paying for time that we're not in the building. And then also there's the constraints on when those times are available. So if time slots could be available to us in a, you know, in a smaller slice of time, you know, with a little bit more flexibility, that would certainly help. And I'd be happy to provide you with sort of our, I'd be happy to provide a wish list, if that would help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I follow up on that real quick? Nick, looks like this is scheduled, if passed, for a public hearing. So I would say make sure you get your comments into that as well, so it's on the official record.
Thank you.
That's all the public comment in person. Anthony, can you check one last time if anyone online is wishing to speak?
Still no raised hands.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, clerk. Now, our agenda is in a little bit different order this week. We go to reports next, and the youth liaison report.
Hello. All right, this is Georgia Bullard, Youth Liaison speaking, for the purposes of the record. So this last weekend, we've had Irrigation Festival. So Squim High School has been doing a lot of things that have been involved with the logging show and the irrigation parade and so on and so forth. Our Future Farmers of America had a float in the irrigation parade. And the Interact Club led the parade with their American flags. As well as our robotics team also had, they remodified one of their competition robots to send it down to interact with the kids as it was driving. So, yeah. The North Olympic Library System, as I'm sure you guys have seen, have been remodeling their library. Hopefully, the update, well, their plan for the updated library is to include a larger teen space. So everyone's looking forward to that. It's been causing a bit of a stir at the high school, looking across the street and seeing a building with no roof. So, yeah. So we're looking forward to that happening. And these high schools also sponsoring a blood drive in a few weeks. So we're trying to raise blood. So, yeah.
Hello, this is Malia Nelson, speaking for the purpose of the record. Our robotics club is also having an Applebee's fundraiser on May 25th. This Friday marks the end of AP testing season. Woo! So you won't have any more stress at teens till next year, hopefully. Our senior ball, our senior prom, is this Friday. So hopefully, we won't have any drunk teenagers on the roads. We have preventions against that. And graduation is in less than one month for our seniors. So get ready for that.
Thank you both. Very enlightening. City manager?
Just a quick question. How did the flocking go? The flamingos?
Hello, Georgia Bullard again. So I'm a senior and the flocking is a, it's a fundraiser by the Squim Grad Party, which is a booster club. It's not affiliated with the high school. We don't control any of that money. They do ask for volunteers, like I went flocking. But I don't, the plan for the grad party is it's after graduation, right? Everyone goes to Squim Community Church to have a safe, sober, I think there's another, about a safe, sober place to graduate, to celebrate their graduation. Not really sure what's going on with that, but it is happening. They give out prizes. Oh, the Roca Family Auto Center donates a car typically, which is when you come, you stay for the whole time. Your name gets entered into a drawing and hopefully you win a car. Yeah.
Thank you.
Did you, did you want me to go next?
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, and nice to meet with you, council. I think I'll save the city manager department for the very last and start with finance tonight. I was told, I didn't know this before, but when the city spends more than $750,000 in a year of federal money, then that initiates a federal audit. And so we're under that this year. It actually started Friday. We hit that number between our ARPA funds, like 500,000 of that was spent. We also had some reimbursement from FEMA for some storm replacement and repair and then bodyboard cameras, et cetera. So I just wanted you to be aware that finance is in the middle of a federal audit, but it's called a light audit. But anyway, I just wanted, you'll get an update on that when it's finished. And also, you've been very good about understanding a lot of the IT technology that we're implementing, particularly the Tyler technology that started in the finance. You are aware that it was kind of a moving target with the new utility billing software we keep talking about. And so they continue to take calls. It's live, they spend a lot of time on it, but it's, people are interested and are supporting it. Sue was quick to tell me it's amazing for her staff. Things that used to require, you know, 10 to 20 clicks to complete a process are now done in two clicks. And so hours and hours of savings is being done by the finance department with this technology initiative. So anyway, really glad about that. From Communications, I will be forwarding an email tonight. I thought I did, but I just looked in my draft inbox. I never hit send. I thought I did, but I just looked in my draft inbox, I never hit send, so I will hit, I will do that tonight. This is an email from Barbara from our communication department that has the, it has the link to our survey and, and the instructions on how to slice and dice the recent community survey data by every demographic that was captured in the survey. So you can look at age or any question by age, by location, by any of the questions that were asked there in the identifier. So anyway, I'll forward that to you so you can, you can play with that or do your own research and, and queries. From human resources, Emily reminds me that Paul Bucic will be starting this Thursday as the new Public Works Director, interim director, until Sarah unfortunately retires in July, but we'll see Paul at our next meeting. You'll also see under the consent agenda that I think a lot of folks, particularly HR and legal and whatnot, are happy that the sergeant's contract, looks like it went through, and you'll, you'll be evaluating that. But that was all staying within the parameters that you all told us to, to stay within, so that's good. We have two conditional acceptances, one from a new water maintenance work operator, really seasoned and experienced individual, and we have a new police officer candidate that's being processed. So those are good things. And probably what's your most interest is, we're still working on the DCD open position, director position, so work in progress. From Public Works, I'm grateful to be able to report that they recently submitted a grant for 1.52 million for the Centennial Place Park and another 500K for the Margaret Kerner Parks. And that was submitted to the Recreation and Conservation Department of the state. Any of you that are traveling out north, if you've traveled the Squim Bay Road, you know that we finally, the roundabout's finally done and the North Squim Bay Road is all paved and done. There's still some striping and some landscaping to be done, a couple of street lights and whatnot, but it's now usable and a lot of residents are happy about that, so I'm real pleased with that. Finally, from Public Works, the CIP, so as you know, that's a five or six-year plan that's been updated, so that will be going to the Planning Commission for their review on May 21st and then to you all. So really excited, a lot of work has gone into that. And then from the legal department, they have implemented new software there that is allowing them to run risk reports that has taken a one-hour job to a five-minute job. So I'll continue to share with you the benefits of technology, but all these savings are for a reason. It allows our staff to do other things and, and save money and time that wasn't necessary just due to inefficiency in manual systems, so you know that. Anyway, from, I wanted to thank all of the departments, but particularly probably Public Works and the Police Department for all the work that went into, as you heard earlier, the irrigation festival before and after, a lot of, lot of extra time trying to get the city prepared and ready for that and to block streets and, and all went into that. And finally, I've sent two emails to you that I intend to, you know, follow up on. One was the State of the City. You got the raw deck, but you didn't get my explanation of each of the slides, so that's still coming. I'm planning on doing that this week, so hopefully by the week's end you'll have that. It's worth my explanation to overlay on top of that data, so you'll have that coming. And then lastly, an email went out earlier today, probably noonish, that had to do with your retreat. I tried to explain it as simple as I could with color fonts and different columns and whatnot, but that's now in your court, whether, I'm not sure how you want to move that forward, but the idea is that a work plan is coming out of your priorities and that will give us something on the operations side. As you know, we implement your policies. And so I'm not sure if you're going to want a work session to review that, to talk amongst yourselves, or you just want to talk to me one-on-one in our ops meetings or through email, but eager to finalize that. Dave says a lot of the other cities, he takes counsel, you know, through this exercise. They eventually, when they like it, then they formally adopt it. And then we have an adopted work plan for the year. And I do remember some of you mentioning last year, you said your priorities and you weren't sure if, you know, what the work plan was behind it. Some was done, some we were waiting for guidance on, so this is an attempt to try to put in black and white or other colors, you know, in print, what we hope to do to try to hit the nail on the head based on your priorities. So that might be open for discussion later in your meeting, but I'm not sure how you want, I don't know, not sure how you want to proceed with formalizing that or adopting that, but I did, I wanted to end with that, so. And with that, I believe that's everything I had for council tonight.
Thank you.
I just, I have a question, Kathy.
Sure.
Just one clarification, Matt. The roundabout that's complete, is that the one at Squim Avenue and old, the old highway?
Yes, nearly, nearly complete, yes.
Next is the council reports, but it looks like we have three issues to discuss as a council before we do our open council discussion. The first thing being, Item 7C1, Squim City Council Committee Assignments.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Downer. I'll be sharing my screen so you can see. It was also included in your packet. We have to update our Squim City Council assignments now that we have a new counselor. So let me share my screen and this is open for you to discuss. I, you'll see that we have highlighted the positions that were previously held by Counselor Farrell, and then I've also highlighted, like at the top here, the Council Finance Committee. We need some new members on that as well. So this is up to you, how you want to go through it, if you want to go one by one or just want to note those highlights I mentioned, but if you have any thoughts and hopefully we'll fill some council vacancies that we have.
Why do we need three people on finance?
RCW.
It's RCW.
Oh, rats. Okay, thank you.
I also wanted to make a comment about the finance committee. It's been a very enlightening experience and I am willing to share, I would like to encourage other counselors to take that on, not that, I'm just already on the alternate or the, the council rep for the Marine Resource Committee and the Parks and Recreation Board and the Squim Arts Commission, and it's just a lot for me to manage. So that is why I am respectfully thanking finance for all that I've learned. It really is an enlightening experience to get in there and see what the city spends money on. And, but yes, so others that feel inspired to take on the council finance, I highly recommend it. You'll learn a lot.
So when it says it does not meet, how does that?
So we don't meet, like in this type of setting, you would just go to the finances where the vouchers are, just review them, sign them. So it's not an actual meeting, meeting?
And is that a during the workday type of thing then?
I just do it whenever I am in the building. If it's after hours, I'll go pop in there and sign them, or during business, it's been done out here. So if you want to do them at midnight, you can do them at midnight.
I just wanted to offer that I'm happy to train whoever decides to take on the finance committee. So if that's something you're feeling called to do, Nicole, I'd be happy to walk you through it.
So is that a weekly process or how often does that?
Um, you could do it twice a month ideally would be a good, a number of times to plan that you want to be checking into the finance department. For me, it just was something that I definitely was hoping to, I was going to say, every time I'm in the building is also a really good barometer, just to keep them moving forward, because everything needs two council member signatures on it.
Yeah, I would be interested.
Okay. Write her name down. Vicki, you wish to say something?
I just was wondering if we could ask Counselor Hartman if she was interested in or felt like they, that she had an area of expertise that fit with any of these committees.
Well, partially, I put a couple of little stars here next to things that, because I work full-time, but I do have, we're 4:10, so I do have Fridays off. The, I see that Tom was on the Planning Commission, says the Squim Planning Commission Liaison, and that meets first and third Tuesdays at 5:30, so that works with my schedule. The chamber does not work with my schedule, but the Housing Solutions Committee is also, works with my schedule, but I see, I mean, we've already got a delegate to that, so if I did, I think, I agree with Harmony that finance is, looking at the claim vouchers is a really good way to get to know the organization. So those are the couple that I could see that worked in my schedule.
So Nicole, would you like to be on the finance committee?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the top eight are mandatory.
Yes.
They do need somebody. And the other ones, it's, if you're interested in.
Right, so I could, if nobody else feels compelled, I could replace Tom Farrell on the Squim Planning Commission Liaison as well, just because that does work with my schedule.
Thank you for volunteering, and I do appreciate Harmony's request to not be on finance. I think we should honor it.
Is there one other person though? We're still one short.
I volunteer for finance.
Planning or finance?
Finance.
Okay, so those are three people. Thank you for the people that volunteered.
And I'd be happy to train you, Nicole. No problem. Thanks. Yeah, four committees was a lot for me.
Okay, so is there Amy? Anything else?
Yes, so.
Chamber of Commerce.
As mentioned, yeah, there's the Chamber of Commerce Board that's, Tom was on, Tom Farrell was on, so if.
Not mandatory, but I can do it. I can do it. 7:30. I can do it.
I'm sorry, Kathy, I would have volunteered for that one, but I'm doing mom things at 7:30 in the morning, so.
I bet you are. Yes, I'll do the chamber.
And then I just had one more note, I think it's one more note about the Sister City Association. Counselor Farrell was also on that, but Rachel, I see that you're still on that as well. Just wanted to call that out in case anyone's also interested, but we have one, so I believe we are.
Hopefully, nobody's interested, because I'll fight them for it.
Okay. And that fills the gaps that I had in case there's any other discussion from council.
Okay. Is everybody's comfortable with what they volunteered to do? And, okay, thank you very much, my fellow counselors. Vicki, would you like to volunteer for anything?
I'm already on four committees. Is that enough?
Yes, I think that's enough. Thank you.
I'll turn it to her.
Thank you.
Okay. Dan, on the, would you like to read the statement? Or do you want me to?
I'm happy to.
Okay. The next is the Statement of Coexistence and the Government-to-Government Relationship.
All right, this is also in the packet, 7C2. And with the help of Skolam representative Lonnie Garringer, Harmony and Rachel and I worked with her on this. She very kindly included Skolam language words for key, keywords that I'm not going to dishonor Skolam language by trying to pronounce, so I'll read it entirely in English. The city that we know as Squim was once inhabited solely by the first peoples known as the Skolam people, represented by three tribal governments, Jamestown Skolam, Port Gamble Skolam, and Laura Elwa Klalum. All of these three sister tribes, the Jamestown Skolam tribe, take the lead. Of these three sister tribes, Jamestown Skolam tribe takes the lead in relationship with the city of Squim while including the two sister tribes as determined by the tribes. We, the city of Squim and our partner, the Jamestown Skolam tribe, value coexisting respectfully and responding together and responsibility together for the purposes of stewarding the people, lands, and institutions that serve us. Our governments do not work alone in isolation, but care for each other's communities. With enlightened awareness of the local history of this area, we commit to a continued partnership and collaboration as two sovereigns. The statement of coexistence and government-to-government relationship is a respect to the Skolam people and their history. It was, this evolved or morphed from the land acknowledgement statement that was recently adopted by the Planning Commission, and it was my hope and several here expressed support that the city council would do something similar, and that's where this has come from. And I would like to see us adopt this as a statement that could, we could talk about how we publish this, if it's something on our council portion of the website, if, once a quarter, we take a moment to read this as we, at the beginning of the meeting, or some other variation on that.
Do I hear motion?
I move to approve the Statement of Coexistence and Government-to-Government Relationship Statement.
Go ahead, second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
Any comment on how we use this? Is that, is that part of this?
I figured we would vote and then talk about how often.
What do you mean? Say that again.
Vote to adopt and then talk about how we use it, how we publish.
Oh, no, I'm just, I just want to know if there's any discussion before we vote on it about the logistics, any certain words, anything? Okay.
It was, I would just say that it was a real pleasure to work with Dan and Rachel and Lonnie on this, and this, this language felt very genuine and very, it was genuine language that really represent our thoughts. So yes, I look forward to discussing this further with the counselors.
Clerk, would you call a roll, call vote, please?
Counselor Downer?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Janice?
Yes.
Counselor Rutter?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the implementation? Is that what you'd like to talk about now?
Yes. So I'm supportive of putting it on the council portion of the website, but also reciting it once a quarter. I think at every meeting, reciting it would, people would tune out, you know what I mean? If you hear it too often, you just kind of tune out, but every so often, it feels newer and refreshing and it's a good opportunity to reiterate that bond.
Everybody in agreement? Anybody disagree, Vicki?
Vicki has, yeah.
I don't disagree. I, it's squie ching and new Skolam. I would like to see us also revisit it with the tribe on a kind of set timeline because things change over time. You know, it used to be a big deal to do land acknowledgement and that has really moved to other things. And so if we do this, I would think it'd be important to check in with the tribe on a regular basis, like every year or two years, to make sure that the language is still appropriate.
Anybody disagree with what's been discussed? Okay, thank you. Now, the next on the agenda is the.
Wait, can we come to a consensus about how often we recite it and like where it goes? That way, for things, like if we all agree that it should be on the website, then communications knows to put it there. Or if we all agree to meet with the tribe every couple of years, then, you know, we need to figure out, well, does staff take care of that timing? Or do we as a council take care of that timing? Do you understand what I'm trying to work out logistics?
Okay, make your proposal.
Okay.
Every two years.
So my proposal is that every two years, council. Hmm, one moment, please. Should I say mayor or deputy mayor? That way it's like, that person has that job to, I think it would make it safer, so nobody, nobody forgets. So there's not an issue of like, did you do it? No, I thought you were doing it. So, okay, so my proposal is that every two years, mayor or deputy mayor reach out to the tribe to revisit the statement and make sure the language is satisfactory. And I also propose that it goes on the council portion of the website and that we recite the statement once a quarter. I think that's it.
That's good. Every, is there anybody who does not agree with that?
I would, I agree with that and would add that we. that we perhaps include the statement in written form in, at every meeting, in the minutes, and reread it verbally out loud once a quarter.
Okay, yes.
Does that make sense?
Yes. I support that.
City, city attorney, can we just write, can we just say this as an informal proposition? Proposal? It doesn't need to be an ordinance or a resolution, right?
So are you saying that you, just the recitation need to be in an ordinance? No, you do not. So I'm sorry, could you?
It's going to be recited quarterly. It's going to be written quarterly. It will. It'll be written every meeting in the, in the agenda minutes. It'll be on the city council website.
And so what is your question?
It doesn't need to be an ordinance or a resolution, right? We can just propose it.
Yeah, council can certainly propose that. I think if there are any criteria that you may want to not be included in minutes or something like that, that would be helpful to know. But if you're just having that as a standard, I think that's fine. I don't.
Right. And then review it every two years with a tribal member.
Yeah, I think that, you know, for passage of time and transitions in council and staff and all of that other stuff, it might be handy to have that out. But another solution to a resolution or something like that could just be a procedure. You could make an amendment to your council rules. You could do a variety of things if council were so inclined. But technically, no, you don't need to do it.
Thank you.
I appreciate the council working on this. Yes, Brandon?
I would agree with adding it to the council rules, at least the part to revisit. So that way, it's there and somebody's not going to have to remember two years from now.
Vicky?
Thank you, Brandon. That was my comments. And also that we review it with the tribal government.
I said tribe member, so tribal government. Got it. Thank you.
And I would just request that if council does want to have that in its rules, that council have a clear motion to direct staff to bring that back to a future meeting.
I can motion that next.
Yes.
But was just hoping to get a consensus on the proposal before we move forward.
And we have a consensus. Thank you.
Okay. I motion that city staff prepare the council rules and procedures at the next meeting with an amendment to include the mayor, deputy mayor, reaching out to the tribal government every two years. Oh, how did I word it before? Every two years to revisit the Statement of Coexistence and make sure the language is satisfactory.
Yes, thank you. And direct the staff to bring that back to us to vote on it?
Oh.
As a council rule.
And direct staff to bring it at the next council meeting is my hope, if they have time.
Yes, I am fairly certain that we will have time, because as I understand it, that should be a very minor amendment. And I think your wonderful attempt to make a very clear motion will be well-received in context, even if it's not a verbatim reflection of your motion. So yes, thank you.
It was helpful. Thank you. Thank you, Vicky, for your participation. Okay, the next on our council.
Oh, wait, wait. So we have a motion on the floor, but it has not been seconded or voted on.
Oh, I didn't know proposals had to be, we have to have a motion to direct the staff to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
I second.
Well, now we have to vote on it.
Yes.
Yes. Is there anybody against it? Instead of a roll call vote, is there anybody against? All right, okay. We're finished with that. Thank you. Okay, the next is the Squim Arts Commission Rules and Responsibilities. There's a letter, there's a letter of suggested edits and a Art Advisory Commission flow sheet.
So I'd like to speak to this. So as the council liaison to the Squim Arts Commission, it's been a very informative experience for me. At this time, the Arts Commission is made up of mostly all new members. There are two members of the Arts Commission that have been part, that have continuously been members since the end of 2023 up till now, but otherwise, it's a whole new commission. And so the Squim Arts Commission, we are hopeful that we can help. What I'm hoping this discussion tonight will be is a discussion amongst ourselves as counselors for what we perceive to be the role of the Squim Arts Commission. And to come to consensus on that, we have a document here from Hannah. Thank you, Hannah, for preparing a flow chart of her, of how you perceive the communication flow going through the Squim Arts Commission, from the commissioners, through the arts liaison. And in this, and in this flow chart, the PW Arts Liaison would be the Public Works Art Liaison. So that would be Sarah Hurt, who's a staff person, is, she's also known as the arts coordinator. And then the arts letter original is the one that was drafted by Brandon and brought to council. And then it got approved. And then it hasn't been sent to the Arts Commission yet, because there has been so much turnover. And so the reason it hasn't gone to them yet is we wanted to wait for there to be a full commission. Now that there is a full commission, unfortunately, another commission member just resigned after the last meeting. So there is one vacancy currently. But at this point, with six active commissioners, I think that it is time to send the letter to them. The suggested edits were something that I thought through after having a good discussion with Sarah and Hannah about, well, if the, if we want to send a clear message that the Arts Commission is an advisory commission, maybe some of these parts of the letter might make sense to be edited and said a little bit differently. So that's where I'm, that's why we're bringing this discussion forward. With, I hope that we find some consensus as counselors as to what our hope is for the Arts Commission, what we, and, and find, and find the direction that we would like to take this forward. So there it is for consideration. And I look forward to this discussion. Thank you.
I must say, Vicky, you and I were on the committee that helped reorganize this commission. I don't remember this chain of command at all. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah. I'm concerned that, like, they're advisory to the city council, but we're not in the flow chart, except for one little piece. And so I, you know, I think we were looking, Kathy, when we were meeting, we're thinking about the Arts Commission and then kind of comparing to how the Planning Commission operates. And I think we did ask the Planning Commission to feel, you know, freedom to bring up new ideas, not just to wait for ideas to come from, from us as council, because that's not even our area of expertise. But so I just, I feel like there has been turnover since we tried to make everything a little more smooth, and I'm just concerned that we aren't quite hitting it. You know, these people are volunteers and they do more than just the meetings. And I think that's an area of kind of grayness, where there's not good understanding that when you're on the commission and you're coming to meetings and giving your advice and helping with the jurying of the artwork. And then when they're a volunteer, that's like a, what is that noise? That is another activity completely different. And I think there's not a clear, you know, line with that. I do also think that we have under-resourced the position. And I believe that the arts coordinator works 20 hours a week or less, and that's barely enough time to just get together, get the monthly meetings together and process stuff. So I think there's a lot going on there. But I, I am worried about losing more people again, because we're not clear. And I want to make sure that we're supporting them in, in the work that they do on behalf of the city. I mean, that they participate in the music in the park. They participate heavily in the Friday, First Friday art walks. They're very talented people, but I just want to make sure we send the right message to them, that their, their opinion is valued and that we do want to hear, you know, hear from them through the proper channel. But I just think we need to be really clear about what that is and make sure we're resourcing the work enough.
Okay. I, when we met as a group, for them to get restarted, we made sure they had a budget for this year. We also realized as a council last year, we voted on letting them have more free rein, because for temporary art, they have very strict guidelines from the city. They have to follow those guidelines. I don't have a problem with that. We voted on it last year as a council. For permanent art, it has to go through city council. We haven't had any permanent art to go through city council for quite a while. But I don't have a problem. I thought we voted on this at the end of last year, didn't we? Do you, anybody remember?
The letter or the makeup of the?
The, how much we were going to allow them to do their own thing.
Yeah, it was a few months ago.
Right.
When I came and asked council what we viewed, and we agreed that they would be allowed to work on things of their choosing. Because in the end, it would come before council generally. And the most we would say is no, which is hence, that's why the original letter went out stating as such, so.
Come through council, through staff, just like the.
Correct.
Planning Commission or the parks.
Right.
Yes.
But if we're gonna, like, I think with Kathy, Vicky said use their expertise. Only using them for what we direct them to do is a waste of that committee for me.
Right. And they have guidelines already, what they can and cannot do. I thought we voted to give them more free rein last year.
We did.
Because I don't know anything about art. I think I do, but I don't.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm not sure. I remember, because I asked this council, do you want me to do it or on behalf of council?
Right. So Harmony, is there, do they feel constrained or not supported or?
So I've only been able to talk with one of the commissioners, well, only been able to. I had a, the commissioner, the, there is one commissioner that has left that I had spoken with on multiple occasions. And this commissioner did take time to share with me the reasons that they left. So I only have one data point. So other commissioners may have left because scheduling constraints, or maybe these, the other commissioners that left also felt that the commission was not a good fit for them. That the commissioner that left did share with me that they felt that they could support the arts better in the community as a private citizen, rather than being on the Arts Commission. So that's, like I said, this is just one data point in the commissioners that have left. So I don't know. I'm, and, and I'm new to the Arts Commission, and it's been a very enlightening, very educational experience for me. The commissioners are very passionate people, very, they're artists, they're very, they're, they're wonderful people. And I'm also an arts person, so I really have a good time interacting with them. And so it's, I just want to help, I want to help move this forward in a good way. Like I said, the edits to the letter that I made were coming out of the discussion that like, oh, well, if we want to really send a clear message, it's an advisory committee, commission, excuse me, then maybe we could make these edits. But they're really just suggestions. If, and honestly, the first, the, the, the letter that, the original letter as it was drafted, as long as we introduce that letter with, there's, you shared with me a chart, Vicky, last, was it last week or? About the, yes, last week, Monday, you shared with me an excellent chart showing a breakdown of the various roles and responsibilities of the various parts of the commission and the council and the staff people. And so that would be a really good one to just, as this new commission is moving forward, take the proverbial bottle of champagne and, and, and welcome these commissioners to this adventure of being on the Arts Commission and contributing to the arts community. So I, like I, I am not, I, I'm not, whether, I, I think that the original letter is excellent. The suggestions that I made were simply suggestions. And so we could, if you all want, we could maybe talk through them, suggestion by suggestion. If we wanted to edit it further, or maybe, maybe we could, maybe we're not ready to make it. Let me, let me stop talking. I'd like to hear what my other counselors are thinking. And we can move forward on, maybe, on, on, move forward on using the original letter or a suggested letter, or what, 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 how are folks feeling?
I like the letter with the edits. It just makes it more concise. Yeah.
And my preference would be that we stick with the decision we made a few weeks ago and having delegated this to Brandon to do and respect that decision and the work put into it and, and move on. I've lost track, frankly, of what we're doing right now at this meeting. So other than wordsmithing a letter written by one of us is, I'd really prefer we don't do that.
Anybody else? Okay, so we're, okay. Vicky?
I, I agree with you.
Okay. I do, too.
No disrespect was meant in making edits to the letter. Again, just pure suggestion, but, so thank you. Maybe we should just stick with the original letter. Like I said, I'm not, don't feel, I'm not particularly, I don't feel very strongly about using my letter. I was just making it as a suggestion. So the original letter is very eloquent. You have a way with words, Brandon, and I've seen it in many, many instances. So your original letter would be fantastic. And like I said, as long as we frame it with a really clear, here's what the Arts Commission's all about, I think that would go very well. Thank you.
Okay. I don't think this is anything we need to vote on, is it? Okay. I appreciate the discussion, and I appreciate anybody who volunteers on the Arts Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Likewise. Thank you so much.
You're doing a great job, Harmony. Brandon, did you wish to speak about West Glen Bay Road traffic control?
Yeah, I'll make it quick. So we heard public testimony on the issue there by the daycare. And I'll be more than happy to send my correspondence with the daycare owners themselves about the danger. So I originally, after meeting with both of them and a couple other people, wrote out to Sarah in regards to what it would take to restripe that, that section. I don't know how long, it's not very long. And then I can understand the issues involved, but also adding some electronic signboardage there for speed. So unfortunately, I completely disagree with the response from staff on that, because again, it's common sense. Why would you have a passing zone in front of a daycare at 20 miles an hour? So reached a point where I would ask council to direct staff to make that striping change on that section of road to a no passing zone. And if council agreed to add those speed zone, uh, signboards around.
Did you mean a temporary sign that a digital readout of how fast people are driving? A temporary one?
Well, it could be permanent. I'd make it permanent, but.
Are the permanent ones like solar?
Whatever ones we have around town that are permanent.
Okay.
Because we have one on a few different places, about least, to restripe that. We have it in every other area, but why would we need one right in front of a, a daycare?
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, just, I'm concerned about in our.
Yeah, just I'm concerned about in R C W related to council becoming entwined with operations.
This is a policy, you know, make it a policy that no passing zones are implemented, whether it's a school or daycare.
So that would, that's like the kind of rough draft of what you're thinking is.
Yeah, I mean, it's common sense, yeah. I'll make it a policy if it's, if we want to go there.
Because, I mean, honestly, I think I I walk that road almost every day. Or cross it from Rodifer to whatever that other road is. Crossing West Wind Bay. And yeah, people speed every single time. I have to make sure that I don't get hit. And I'm not sure. I mean, I think traffic signs would help a little bit. I just, I don't know if it would help as much as you're hoping.
Some safety is better than no safety.
Yeah, that I live out there and that street for bicyclists and pedestrians is horrible. Because there's ditches on each side, there isn't any infrastructure, there isn't any, there drainage ditches, there's no sidewalks, aren't any sidewalks. And I know the city has plans on, we're on the six-year plan, we're one year into it. My HOA has offered to give that property along West Wind Bay Road to the city. So they won't have to purchase it or anything, they can have it. It already has an asphalt path on it, but it's up above the the drainage ditches. But anyway, I know that we've received at least three letters from citizens that live out there that are concerned about bicyclists and pedestrians on that street. And that's at the other end, that's not even saying what goes on in front of the daycare. Vicky?
Were there recommendations from staff and can we hear them? Did you say there was recommendations from staff?
Well, there was no recommendations other than. I I can forward it to you what their response was. But again, it was, it's unacceptable to me and what they replied to.
From like Squim Police Department or the.
I can speak to that if you want, Mayor, but it's up to you.
Go ahead.
So I was just copied on the email like all of you do. So I think it came, anyway, there's a chain going around. So we just forwarded it to Nick, our city engineer, who has a traffic engineer underneath him. And so he's the one that responded using engineering as his response. So he's here if you want it, but it, you know, I it, I don't know how it ties into your conversation. But if you want to hear from him, you can, or you can get the email or whatever. But that's, that's what the mayor and Vicky is, I think, guess responding to is that input.
I didn't get an email. It was amongst the staff still.
Yeah, it was the staff and I think, I don't know, the the mayor and deputy mayor, I don't know who got that. But yeah, it came from our city engineer.
Okay. Brandon, would you like to put that forth as a motion, the striping?
Yeah. Well, let me ask this real quick. Is there any desire to do anything further than just that?
I'm, I'm very interested in this. I'm supportive of the direction you're going. I'm uncomfortable with moving a motion now to change policy when we're aware that there's been robust discussion, but we don't know what that was. So some way of bringing that to light appropriately, whether it's at this meeting or scheduling for the next meeting. But I certainly want to hear why we wouldn't do what you're talking about doing. And it sounds like.
Basically, because there was no data to suggest that we should do it, which again, doesn't make any sense. It it it's really common sense as a daycare. And are we basing decisions off, we're waiting for that child to get hit? Where we're always playing defense and waiting for that? Or before a child loses their life, should we make a change?
For, excuse me, council, for purposes of the record, Christina Nelson Gross, City Attorney. So while I appreciate council and members of the public who've talked about this being common sense from a legal perspective, just know that it's highly problematic to make engineering and policy, excuse me, to make engineering decisions based upon what what is being coined as common sense. That is hugely problematic without the data and the engineering expertise to back that up. I would politely request that if council were to seriously consider this, that I think as counselor, or as as Dan had mentioned, that staff be given the opportunity to lay out the pros and cons and perhaps come up with some additional alternatives. Because I think, as it has been stated earlier, staff aren't aware of any issues with that. And then the other thing with that is that if council truly wanted to make this a policy decision, I would encourage you to look at this citywide, not just in front of one area, which of course would take a longer review and data gathering points. So that's.
It would be a full city policy, but, you know, if we're basing off that, I want to know who's going to stand up in front of here explaining why a child's dead. Because the data didn't think that there was going to be one.
I I agree with Brandon and I and I agree with you. But what is the issue with painting a solid line instead of a broken line in front of a daycare?
I'm not an engineer and I would be remiss if I were to try to answer that. And if council would like an answer to that question, I would suggest that they ask city engineer Nick Dosty to come to the podium.
Nick, can you just come answer that question for us at the podium? Thank you very much.
Oh, turned it off. Good evening. For the record, city engineer Nick Dosty. So the question is, what's the problem with striping it? I wouldn't say there's necessarily a problem, as in we can't do it. I guess since I'm up here, I can maybe provide a little bit more context to my response. It to kind of answer Vicky's question as well. There was no official recommendation or alternatives given, just a very cursory analysis of the existing condition. And then a brief review of of crash data that is provided from washed out and collected by the different legal law enforcement jurisdictions of the area. So an analysis was not performed. A deep dive into the MUTCD, the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, wasn't wasn't performed. You know, normally I wouldn't do that or recommend that unless there's an obvious egregious concern for site distance, speed control, intersection could, intersection control, things like that. So that can be done to see, you know, if if we're looking to kind of put numbers. But I mean, to just say, why can't we paint it solid? I I don't, I can't say that we can't. What I will say is it's not quite as simple as just going out there with a paintbrush and just painting another line, right? So typical procedure on something like this for new striping that isn't expected to have an overlay anytime soon is we would actually have to go out and grind out the asphalt. You can't just cover it up with black paint. So we would grind out the asphalt. We would put, we would fill that milled out area with HMA mix and then come back and stripe to yellow solid lines. I guess maybe some additional history in the area that once was a county road, evidenced by me pushing for the city to get full ownership of the right of way between Washington and White Feather for that road. So historically, it was a rural road. You know, we, there's been continued conversation about safety for pedestrian access and safety for bicyclists along that stretch of the corridor. So to be quite frank, the corridor was not originally intended to have pedestrian and bicycle access on it. And so the use of it was truly kind of a more rural arterial or rural collector that than the city annex. So we're kind of dealing with two different classifications historically and usages historically and what it is now, especially given that area where there's potential for a lot of development, right? So I guess that's kind of a long-winded statement of saying that it's it's doable. It's definitely possible, but it it would take a little bit more coordination than just sending guys out there with two rollers and a paint can.
Okay, Vicky would like to ask a question.
Yeah.
And what about one of those flashing signs that tells people to slow down? Is that? Does there need to be a traffic study for that or? What's the kind of cost of that?
So if there's, yeah, if there's concern about speeding, right? Then of course, we would set up some sort of tracking station, right? I'm just coming at this from, you know, trying to support a stance with with data. So we'd go out there with a traffic counter periodically over a set period to see what the track speeds are, what the ADT is, things like that. Typically, summer, which we're approaching, is not a good time because you have a lot of seasonal traffic. So yes, you'll be getting a lot of people, you'll be getting a lot of people out of town. So it's a good data point, but not necessarily for making a decision on how to operate and maintain the street. So again, the issue, or I guess the question of putting up a flashing sign, you know, I I can't say that there's anything wrong with it. But come, you know, as the city engineer, I would need to have a cause. Like I guess if you're saying have have data to to put it up, to just put something up, to have it up there and then say that's how we're using tax dollars. Because yes, there's the one-time cost of the sign, but then you have to maintain it. There's an expectation of collecting the data. You can't just put one sign up, it's at least two, right? And so there there's a little bit of a trickle down effect about what what goes into that. Now, it's not complicated, it just takes a little bit of coordination.
Harmony? Oh, go ahead, Vicky. And then Harmony.
Some citizens wanted to do their own study, would you accept any of that information?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. If there's, you know, if they want to hire a consultant and, you know, provide a a report, you know, then.
I meant stand by the side of the road. Speeding, I'm just, I mean, my kids went to that preschool in the eighties and that was a country road. And, you know, when those homes were all built there and that road was not improved, you know, that was a misstep there. But I do think we need to react. And I don't, I agree with Brandon that, I mean, my dad's a retired fire chief and I know what it takes to get a stop sign in a place. Somebody does literally have to die, and I don't think we want that. So I'm just hoping we can like figure out a way to do something that helps while we figure out what else we can do, so kind of like Plan A, Plan B.
Harmony, thank you, Vicky. Harmony?
I was wondering if you had a, and I know pricing of items is always is a volatile thing at this time in the costs going up and down and, but do you have a ballpark? Or would you prefer not to offer a ballpark? And then I was wondering also about, in lieu of the permanent sign, what about? I've I've seen temporary ones that seem to have wheels. And so I'm just asking this in a of purely fact-finding way, what is is there something that we could put in in a very temporary way? And I'm referring to signs that tell people how fast they're going.
So so there's two questions there, right? The permanent signs, you know, what the cost is and and things like that. So I do not have a a cost mainly because the type, style, use, you know, scope. I mean, you can have those things be as fancy or as not fancy as you'd like and collect as much data or little data as you'd like. So there need to be some decisions on exactly what the purpose of the sign is, what you want it to do, how you want it to look, size, things like that. So those are all very, you know, important variables in that estimate. As far as the temporary goes, I do believe we have a trailer that, you know, you you would kind of see, kind of post it around for events and things like that. Last I heard from our operations manager, there were issues with it. So that's currently being investigated. You know, when our mechanic can get to it, I know he's pretty, pretty swamped. So that there, that is a tool that's been used in the past and we and we could use if there's concern. But if I'm reading correctly between the lines, we're looking for more of a long-term implementation in practice. So if there was a concern, say for irrigation festival for that stretch of road, then I would recommend doing, you know, the trailer or a temporary signage versus the conversation we're having right now.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'm going to ask this one more time. And then we're not going to solve this tonight. Is there anything visual the city can do while city council comes up with what our request is? Because this can go into the budget, we're coming up on budget times. Maybe we need to buy another trailer for next year in next year's budget. So we we're going to rely on you to come up with some solutions and costs and then come back to city council. So we are going to do something about this. But it has to be legal and it has to be, you know what I mean? Go ahead.
No, I appreciate that and I I love all the comments. I, of course, everybody wants safety for all, whether children or elderly or whatever, that's that's not the issue at all. I I would love to circle around as a staff with patrol, you know, with police input, with engineering input and come back with a, maybe a temporary, but how do we get data? How do we, but do quickly some kind of interim response and then a permanent response so that we can get it taken care of. It sounds like you've got some flexibility and to be the ability to do it even around best practice engineering or whatever. So we we should come up with, I would say, two of those temporary and a permanent fix. Maybe, is that what you're looking for, Mayor, or something like that? Would that be helpful?
At least temporarily, but I will have a motion at the end once everybody's done.
Nicole? Yes. Thank you.
So I don't know what kind of trailer you were talking about, if it was just a signage type trailer. But I know the county's got one of the speed trailers because they would periodically put it on Taylor Avenue as you enter Sunland. Every few months, they would bring it back out again as kind of a reminder and that helped. But, you know, we're not the engineering or public works experts, so I don't know. It'd be nice to see a recommendation of a couple of mitigation solutions on a temporary basis, like Vicky was talking about. I don't know if there's temporary speed bumps you can put out or signage or some other traffic calming devices.
Guidelines and state laws that we have to follow. But I agree with you.
Because if you had some temporary traffic calming devices, then once a permanent solution is found, you still have those resources to be able to deploy it in other areas. And.
Right.
So I'm really looking at them to be staffed to be the subject matter experts.
Rachel?
Um, Malia has a question or comment. Hello, what's stopping the area by this this daycare to be under the same protections that like schools, school zones are? Like, is it due to the fact that it's not publicly funded? Or would, like, would it be easier instead of proposing a new policy to wrap that into the same policy that school zones are protected under?
Well, they do have their own daycare speed limit.
Okay.
20 miles an hour. But the issue is people passing and people speeding.
I agree.
So it's more about enforcing the already existing limit.
Why is it not a yellow school zone with lights flashing during?
Why is it not a yellow school zone with lights flashing during school hours? Is that what you're asking?
If if I I don't know the answer, but if I had to hazard a guess is that it's controlled by state law and what state law defines as a school zone is is what I suspect. But that would be part of the type of thing that staff would be looking into and in conducting this analysis to see if there are other jurisdictions that are doing these types of things, other types of concerns and and whatnot, because I feel pretty confident in saying that we are not the only jurisdiction in the world in which people are driving inappropriately around daycares and other school zones. And as it is, I think Chief Hill would tell you that there's enough of an issue with people doing the same thing in school zones and you as students can probably attest to that as well.
Thank you.
Good question. So Nick, we're relying on you.
I'm going to I I think I have a motion that might check all the boxes in an interim sort of way. Maybe just hear me out. I I move that
Can I interrupt?
Yes.
Since it sounds like you're gonna, there's going to be some form of solidification of decision making. So I would just like to bring up two more points to kind of bloom this decision making tree a little a little bit more here. One is through the updating of the TMP, which plays into the comp plan. The city and the consultant transpo recently did a speed study of the city citywide. And this area was not flagged, I believe. I didn't review the study, but it was not flagged as an area of concern for speeding. Also, we recently completed and got approved a local road safety plan, which opens us up for safe routes to schools and other funding sources. And so that local road safety plan also did not identify this stretch as a safety concern either. So I'm not saying that as against an argument, but I am saying that the city is currently going through steps when it comes to concern with safety, with multimodal and pedestrian interaction between vehicles as a as a safety process, as a safeguard, as a check and balance. So there are other processes citywide that we're going through, just as a reference.
I I am surprised because we've gotten letters from citizens about what's going on out there. And there are people on the planning commission and council that live out there. I I'm shocked that it was not identified as a unsafe area, but that's okay. We now Brandon wants to make a motion also. So which one is going to go first?
Go ahead. Maybe it might be close. But I was saying that
And thank you, Nick.
Using data like that just sits wrong because we're using past data to justify that nothing's going to happen in the future because nothing happened in the past.
Okay. I'm just going to see if this sticks. If not, that's totally fine. I move that council direct city staff to bring back some pros and cons and maybe some things we can do about it and potential alternatives to removing passing zones within city limits. I think that's one of the things that I would like to address.
Vicky, did you want to ask your question before we vote?
Well, a friendly amendment. Can we ask the council that staff bring back some interim solutions based on this discussion and then some long term solutions? Or maybe not long term, some interim solutions while we investigate longer term solutions.
I'm supportive of that, but I also realized I didn't have a timeline in my motion, so I would request this information. Oh, I don't know when is too soon, by the second meeting in June?
We would we would commit to that. It's it sounds like it's very important and timely and I haven't conferred with the rest of the staff, but that it seems like it's an important decision that we need to move forward on so we could re-prioritize whatever we're doing.
Dan and then Brandon.
So yeah, another friendly amendment, if you don't mind, I think is just I had written down most of what you said before you said it. So rather than stumble through it, does add a preamble to the motion. So whereas there is a real and present danger at the intersection of Roderfer Road and West Squim Bay Road due to vehicle speeding through a 20 mile an hour zone, move to direct staff to bring recommendations to city to calm traffic through that intersection to our next meeting. Now you can adjust the next meeting part of it since we just talked about that. And that recommendations would be both temporary, immediate, as well as long term solutions.
Okay, so I had a motion.
Nobody seconded.
But nobody seconded.
It was amended.
And Vicky had amendments and Dan had amendments. My prior motion wasn't seconded, so it falls. However, I do motion with my previous language, but also including Vicky's suggestions and Dan's suggestions. And I'm pretty sure that's clear enough.
I'll second that.
Wait. Thanks, Vicky.
City attorney, can we do that? Or does somebody actually need to recite it?
Yeah, it's recorded. The the clerk is going to have to go back and and look at that. Any way to fully decipher the biggest thing that I think as a staff member, we would ask council to review is when you get the draft minutes of this meeting, please look carefully at the motion as written out by staff to make sure that it very clearly articulates your intent. I don't know, Amy, if you were able to capture all of the motions in there.
Put me to work tonight. Yeah. I believe I can try.
Can we break it up in this, at least two motions? To make it easier for staff. So Deputy Mayor, would you rescind your motion and I'll make first motion to maybe make it easier?
I'll rescind my motion.
I moved to direct staff to bring forth.
So since we're just clarifying and trying to do order of operations here, the conversation has spanned quite a few concerns. So just if we could for the record and maybe it's already in the minutes, but I just want to make sure that everyone's on the same page. There's been discussion points on the intersection, the striping, pedestrian access, crossing. So temporary and long term solutions to, and I realize these are talking points, but and speed has also been brought up. And so just so I can adequately direct my time and my staff's time to provide you guys with poignant plans, just making sure that everyone's on the same page about, are we just concerned about the intersection, just this stretch, citywide, the whole, you know, from Washington to you know, where are we scope wise?
So before, because I'm not sure what his two separate motions are going to be, my main concern, because I don't speak for the rest of council, my main concern is speeding. And the passing, how it's a passing zone, that does not help. So the speeding is my main concern.
So I moved to direct staff to bring forth the second meeting in June. Some proposed interim controls for the intersection of Roderfer and the West Squim Bay Road dealing with speed and pedestrian safety at that intersection.
Second.
Awesome. It has been moved and seconded.
So just a clarification. So the the intersection, totally get it. That limits the scope pretty significantly if we're talking about speed because and passing because you can't really pass that in their section. So because when you say intersection, that that's the immediate control area up to a certain point. I don't know off the top of my head. So if you're concerned about the intersection, that's great. I can do that. But I'm kind of getting the sense that the bounds of that are beyond just the intersection and the control of the intersection itself, but the approach to it as well. Just trying to
Say from Washington to Roderfer.
Yes, that's fine.
Well, hold on. I'm sorry to be a stick in the mud. But I think a lot of the problem too is after that.
Yeah.
East or sorry, yeah, east.
There is a posted 20 mile an hour zone.
Yeah.
Somewhere in the past, that was decided that that section would be 20 miles an hour.
I think I'm kind of based up to where it goes to a full passing lane. But I think it's somewhere near Roderfer or past Roderfer, sorry.
So instead of intersection, can you clarify for a larger area?
Up into the new 35 mile per hour sign after the daycare. There's a sign there.
And when you say after, you mean east?
East of the daycare.
Is it fair weather? Is where it turns in, I think, into a full pass zone.
Before then.
You know, before then, I would say up to
No, no, I mean, once you can visually see the sign, you can actually increase your speed, right? I don't want to spend this much time on this. I know I understand you want a clear a clear motion.
Yeah, I'm just trying to prevent something where I bring something to you guys and it's like, this is not what we asked for. What'd you spend all your time to?
Exactly. So Brandon, could you restate your motion? I think it's been seconded, but I need to hear it again.
Move to direct staff to bring back at the second June meeting in proposed interim controls for pedestrian safety at Roderfer and West Squim Bay Road and speed control from Washington to Torres Court.
Okay.
I second that. How's that, Nick? Is that much clearer for you?
Absolutely, yeah.
Excellent.
I just want to give you guys something that's useful. So
We really appreciate it.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Do you want to take a roll call vote, Amy? Please. Nick, you can sit down and relax. Thank you.
Counselor Downer?
Yes.
Counselor Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Janice?
Counselor Rutter?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously?
Thank you.
Okay.
I think Brandon, did you have another one?
Did you want to do the second part? Or I can make a shot at it at a next second.
I mean, go for it. I'm not quite sure which second part we're kind of running in circles.
I moved to direct staff to bring back a presentation based on the trying to read this correctly. On the possible adoption of no pass zones near schools and or daycares within the city of Squim.
I Did you have a timeline on that?
At earliest convenience, although that one might take a little bit.
Okay, seconded. Is that with the caveat, is that clear enough for staff?
From my perspective, you're talking about policy wide and the council's ability to implement a no passing zone law citywide in front of schools and daycares. Is that?
Yes.
Yes.
I see three, four, five. Okay, yes, that works for staff. Thanks.
Now, Amy, do we need to vote on that? It's been moved.
That was a motion in a second, so I would look for a vote. Yes.
Would you? Would you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Downer?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Janice? Counselor Rutter?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Okay, the next is open discussion. Is there anything we have not discussed to death? Anything tonight, anything? Hearing none.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Harmony, what is it?
Okay, well, in the Association of Washington Cities, there are some events coming up. There is the conference for the state, the statewide conference. And there's also a Washington. I should have, I don't have the acronym in front of me, but for the education. And so this is a cohort of this would, so what is happening here is there's a cohort of counselors or it's a process, it's open to a cohort of counselors from sister cities to apply together. Port Angeles City Councilor Lindsay Shroom and Warren, and I hope I pronounced that right, emailed all of council, oh, thanks, Rachel, emailed all of council and suggested that all of our council and all of Port Angeles council in an information only email suggesting that we participate together and put together a cohort of counselors to go and participate in this educational summit, which focuses on intercouncil collaboration at the at the sister cit, well, neighboring, I shouldn't use the word sister city, neighboring city level and also statewide. And so there's a series of dates for those. And if anyone is willing or able to participate at this time from Port Angeles, Counselor Drew Schwab, last I am aware, is able to participate from Port Angeles. And so if we would like to put together a neighboring city cohort with Port Angeles at the invitation of their council, is anyone feeling inspired to represent Squim?
You have to be available for all of the dates. It's it's an extensive four or five weekends, isn't it?
Uh, yeah.
Over the summer.
So yeah, July, August, September, October, October, and then in 2025, you come back for a capstone. It's a lot.
This council will think about it and they can contact you.
Well, the problem is the deadline to apply is May 17th, so we have to make a decision tonight.
I know I can't.
Okay.
Too many dates.
I cannot.
Brandon?
I'll be at work.
Okay, Nicole?
If it's that many dates, I'm liable to be out for a lot of it.
Right. Okay, thank you, Harmony. Okay, Vicky, are you interested?
I have conflicts with all but two dates.
Okay. Okay. I will take a closer look at it. I there was one, one set of dates that was a maybe for me, but so I will look through it, but I think I'm 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 leaning towards doing it with Drew. So I think me and Drew will probably go and represent Squim and Port Angeles at the state level in this. So I will keep you all posted in with through the appropriate channels once Drew and I come to a decision. So thank you. And maybe we could talk about the state conference at the next meeting, so we can all decide who's going to represent Squim if we're going to go to that as a as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is there anything else for open discussion? Okay, thank you. Moving on, who is going to attend the next city council meeting? Agenda planning? Anyone? You're not in town? Anybody else? May 21st?
I don't know if I have to say it every time, but I plan to be there.
Okay, well, you're the deputy mayor. I will try to. Okay, thank you. It is much easier to talk about that during a meeting than to try to only email two people at a time. Okay, so now next is the consent agenda. Amy, would you read the titles of the consent, items on the consent agenda? Thank you.
We have item 8A, claim vouchers totaling $616,261.59. Item 8B, the city council's special meeting minutes from April 15th, 2024, and city council meeting minutes from April 22nd, 2024. Item 8C, the Squim City Band Lease Agreement, that's a resolution. Item 8D, the request to waive competitive bidding Item 8D, the request to waive competitive bidding process and authorize the Ole Pen contract, that's a resolution as well. Item 8E, a union agreement between the city of Squim and police sergeants.
Amy, due to what the gentleman that came and spoke to us about the item for the city band, can I remove that from the consent agenda and we'll discuss it in two weeks?
I believe that was 9E that that person was referencing.
Oh, the rental fees. Okay, thank you. Never mind. Okay, the consent agenda has been read. Is there any changes to it? Anybody?
Moved to approve. Consent agenda is written.
Seconded.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been moved to approve and seconded. Amy, would you take, do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Downer?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Low?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Janice? Counselor Rutter?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, next we have general business. Would you read, please, 9A?
This is the interim controls ordinance regarding plat extensions of public hearing. Soon Counselor Downer will open the public hearing and take comments from the public attending virtually and in person. If you are in person and would like to provide public comment, please sign in on the public hearing sign-in sheets on the table in the room. If you're attending virtually via Zoom and wish to provide public comment, please press the raise your hand icon. Or if you're on the phone, press star nine when asked for comments. Comments are limited to three minutes and there will be a timer visible on the screen. Please avoid comments not related to the subject of the hearing. Participants will be disconnected after speaking. Again, press, please raise your hand or press star nine when called for public comment.
Thank you, Amy. The subject of this public hearing is the interim controls ordinance regarding plat extension. The public hearing is now open. Is there anybody that would like to speak about this issue?
Sorry, as a point of order, does the city manager or staff have anything that they want to present first?
Thank you.
I don't, but I know Kim, our consultant, Kim Mahoney, is available to give context should we need it. Are you still on?
I'm here, Matt, still. I'm here, yes, and happy to provide any context that might be needed.
Okay, thank you. Would counsel like a quick overview or was the cover sheet enough or what would, how? Kim's available and she is definitely a subject matter expert.
Does anybody have any questions?
Cover sheet was great. Thank you, Kim, for being here. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, now we can move on to.
I just have one quick question clarification. So there's no motion, but it's just coming back for a future agenda item somewhere? Because if it is, then that doesn't need a motion?
This, sorry, I am locked out of my computer, so I'm going off of memory and Kim can correct me if I'm wrong. But this is the mandatory public hearing that we are required to hold within 60 days after adoption of the ordinance. That's what this is. Counsel has already passed its findings and conclusions. So unless counsel wants to amend those findings and conclusions, there isn't anything that needs to be done here. It's just to take public testimony. Staff will take that and then incorporate that going forward into a permanent draft as needed or required.
Okay, I just said no if we needed to direct staff to put it on the consent or whatever it's going to be.
Nope, nope, we're good. Thanks.
Is there anybody that wished to speak about this publicly? Any citizens on the phone or in person?
We don't have anyone signed up in the room that wishes to speak. And I currently do not see anyone online wishing to speak. Is that correct, Anthony? No one is online?
That is correct.
Amy, do you want me to read the rules even though we don't have anybody to speak?
I always do it for good practice. I'd suggest it, but that's up to you. You've already asked if anyone wishes to speak, so you could just go ahead and close the public comment portion and move on to the next council discussion.
Okay, we will close the public hearing. Thank you. Is there any council discussion? Questions? Okay. There is another public hearing, number two. The subject of this public hearing is the Squim Municipal Code 8.38 Special Events. The public hearing is open. Does the city manager have anybody to present information?
Thank you. I believe Hannah, our director, our manager of parks and events, will put some context to this for you.
Hannah Merrill, Parks and Events Manager for Public Works. So we were doing a scrub of the code regarding special event permits. We realized that we often have groups that are wanting to have small level events that aren't a huge impact to the parks or Public Works groups. Sometimes it's a nonprofit that's doing a walk and it triggers a special event per minute, but it's not something to the level of an irrigation festival or lavender festival. So we have asked to revisit that ordinance in the, in the code and change some costs so that if people want a special event permit for a smaller event, it would be $43 rather than $250.
Any questions?
I have a question, Kathy.
Yes.
Would this impact people who are like having birthday parties in the park? Because I see that happen a lot. They have to get a permit?
Folks that are having an impromptu party are not required to have a special event permit. Generally, they're not bringing in infrastructure or, you know, you know, charging people for anything at their, their birthday parties.
I did want to ask about this. Maybe I misread it. Where it said gathering on sidewalks and city right of way.
And what's your question?
They have to have a permit for that now?
Oh. If you're, if you're gathering in public places and it's a planned event, if it's an impromptu one, it doesn't, it doesn't trigger a special event permit. But if it's something that you're bringing in infrastructure and it's over, you know, 35 people, then you would have a special event permit.
Okay, so that is not, you're not curtailing people standing on the corner?
Correct.
Holding signs?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to public comment. This is a public hearing. Our audience members wishing to make comments will be allowed to three minutes to speak. When it is your time to speak, please give your name, address, and whether you reside within the city limits of Squim. Please avoid repetitious comments, personal attacks, or comments not related to the subject before the council. Do we have anybody online or in person that wishes to speak about this topic?
We have no one signed up in person and I do not see anyone that has signed up to speak online.
Thank you very much. This public hearing, is there any council discussion? Before I close the hearing?
I was just going to recommend waiving the third touch on this if that's admissible to the council.
Okay. And voting on it tonight? Is tonight the first touch? Okay, thank you. Next is.
Sorry, there's a motion.
We need to make a motion.
Why?
Because it's the, it's a public hearing in order to adopt an ordinance.
I thought she asked us to wait two weeks.
Oh, no, she, hold on, because you were asking if this was the second or?
I asked if this was the first touch.
This is the second touch.
That answers my question. Would you like to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion. I move to adopt ordinance 2024-02 be numbered, amending SMC 8.38 Special Events and SMC 3.68 Rates and Fees.
It has been moved and seconded. Amy, would you do a roll call vote, please?
I'm sorry, did you just say and SMC 368?
Yes.
Aren't we just doing 832 right? Or no?
Right.
Oh my gosh, 838, not 368, because 368 is coming later. I'm sorry.
Hey, the print's too small.
My understanding is that because there was a fee changed in the special events section of the SMC, that change is then reflected also in the rates and fees section. If I'm correct.
And the other one, I think, is specifically Swisher Hall.
Amy, would you like to do a roll call vote?
Yes, it's been moved and seconded. Counselor Downer?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Low?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Janice?
Yes.
Counselor Rutter?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. The next on the agenda is 9C, the new noise control ordinance proposed Squim Municipal Codified Ordinance, Chapter 8.32, first touch.
I believe Chief Hill can give you context for this agenda item.
I'll start off by saying, unlike most of the code script that we've gone through, this one's a little more nuanced, so I'm not offended and I completely expect a second touch. So just keep that in mind when you make a motion. So basically, this is kind of an update to council and the community. There's been, well, over the years, a considerable amount of discussion on a noise ordinance, which we've been lacking for about a decade. So given to you in your packet was, I would say, a near final draft of a noise ordinance, but I also realized there's been a lot of input that we've received from the community, that counselors have received from the community, and making sure we're within those, kind of go on the route that you, that you think we should be taking as a city. With that second touch, we'd still be on the timeline. I mean, there's just some minor tweaks and may, maybe a typo here and there that, that we've already identified. But again, making sure we're on the right track. I will say what we do know is that the ordinance that's presented to you tonight is consistent kind of countywide. We're not doing something that is different than Port Angeles, that is different than Clown County and even Jefferson County and Port Townsend. So I think there is that benefit to being consistent across jurisdictions. So you don't come to Squim and all of a sudden it applies differently to you. So I guess what I'm looking for right now is if there's any feedback from council, which you can give me, or if there's some other considerations you can email to and we can continue to work on this. But an update in general, we're pretty much there. Just needing to know that it's in line with your thoughts.
I did have a quick question. You had mentioned that you had gotten some feedback, so I just was looking for clarification. Did you mean feedback prior to having this draft? Or do you mean you've received feedback after drafting this?
Both. I guess that's the easy answer. As I know, there's been previous conversation over the last decade before probably either of our time, but also like things you've heard recently or in comparing what you've heard from constituents to what we've proposed.
I have a question also. Did you purchase or do, does the city need to purchase a noise meter?
Not with this ordinance.
Got it. Thank you.
Is it changes still need to be made such that it really needs a second touch? Or is it minor enough to just put it on, change it and then put it on next meeting's consent or?
I would say a second touch is the most appropriate. There's some specific wording when it comes to law versus a, in my highlighted notes here, a nuisance versus a disturbance. And there's case law that speaks to how you handle those, whether it be under the, like enforceable under the, our chronic nuisances, or, you know, typically just a fine, which would, right now it's set at $250, I believe. So make sure that verbiage is consistent throughout, because this is taking, at this point, countless other policies from other jurisdictions and also in light with about seven specific case law and MRSE guidance as well.
I'm ready for mushroom when everybody's done.
And I'm sorry, counsel, if I could just add one other point in there. Purposes of the record, Christina Nelson, gross city attorney. And just note too, that we are looking at this with what it may mean to actually try to enforce it, which is why Chief Hill mentioned those type of things, right? So yes, I completely concur that a second touch is the most appropriate way to go. Thank you.
We already had one citizen talk about it tonight, so there might be more people. Go ahead, Harmony.
That was, thank you for bringing that up, Kathy. That was my question about are manufactured homes and condos as the public member mentioned, are they excluded? And I, you know, base, I read through it quickly, not, not that quickly, sorry. I read my packet and in reading through it, I'm, I'm not sure that manufactured homes and condos would be excluded. But yeah, there's, there's public input that we, we need to look at, I suppose, in, in seeing whether that would be excluded or not.
And that citizen might be taking it literally, like I take things literally when I read them. And I don't know that that is excluding condos and manufactured homes.
That was, yes, that was what I was trying to get at.
I don't see anywhere where it's any specific apartment, condos, townhomes are excluded from anything. I'm not quite sure where that came from, but I think that goes to the point of a second touch. I know he can reach out to me if need be. Also believe that Counselor Butler may have had a question.
Same one.
And, and I would just add that while I did a very quick cursory review while he was making his comment, and I suspect that the solution could be, in there we use the worm, word, or the phrase property owners, right? Which property owners encompasses manufactured homeowners and condo owners and things like that. However, I would not want that to be construed, construed to apply only to the property owner and not to tenants of adjacent properties either. So, so those are exactly the types of things that we're going to be looking for as well. And, and it's always helpful to have a step back from an ordinance that you've been spending a lot of time on and then come back and look at it with fresh eyes. And I think that's what we're doing here. So thank you.
Okay. Any, yes, Nicole?
I'm just curious. You mentioned we've been without an ordinance for 10 years. And what's the history about why it was removed or repealed?
Under previous administration, different avenues were looked at. Frankly, it was as Squim grew where business meets residential started creating some problems. And there's discussion on noise meters and then some changes in law, which is one of the reasons we ask is there's kind of two routes you can take on this is you go through noise meters, which creates a whole other set of standards going through or use more of a reasonable standard. And some of those court cases have given you guidance to, that is allowed, back to the, the verbiage of it being a nuisance versus some other term you use, so.
Rachel, did you have anything to say?
I did not.
Okay, Brandon?
So I moved to direct staff to schedule a public hearing on this matter in the regular ma, on this matter in the regular manner.
Would somebody like to second it?
I'll second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to schedule a public hearing on the, on the noise ordinance.
That'll suffice, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Do you want to, I know there's a lot of discussion going on just from other topics today, when would like that to occur?
Just whenever you want to bring back the second touch on it.
I thi, I think you, Chief Hill and I had discussed, we're feeling pretty confident with the first meeting in June. So if that's acceptable to council, we will aim for that. If for some reason we need to deviate from that, we will certainly let council know in a timely manner. Thank you.
Is there anybody against that? All right, thank you. The next item would be 9D, budget amendments. Thank you, Chief Hill.
Hi, Mary. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council Members. Sue Hagenner, Administrative Services Director. For the record, this is a pretty exciting item for staff and should be for council. It's the first formal touch on a budget amendment to the 2024 budget for a topic that we've been discussing while within the city staff, probably for years and years and years, specifically with many of you current council members, at least for the last year. We have a budget amendment presented tonight to allow the city to purchase property for a future park. These items have come, come before council at least three times, both in the council meeting and executive session, as process requires. The budget amendment involves a couple of different funds. We have a Parks Restricted Fund where we account for special projects, like a property purchase for a park. So what we're doing is we're rolling over some money that was unspent from the prior year to help fund the purchase. We are adding some grant money that we received from, that we will receive from our state legislature, thanks to staff lobbying efforts. So we've added a line item to help fund that park purchase. We've also added a transfer in from the Rainy Day Fund to help fund a shortfall in the funding for the purchase. And then finally, I've added an appropriation or an expense that allows us to move forward with the purchase. Again, at the last council meeting, city manager was given authority by council to finalize negotiations for the property acquisition, and including exercising a purchase and sale agreement. Well, the purchase and sale agreement has been signed, and the purchase is moving forward. We have a pretty tight timeline. We also requested council to give us staff latitude on different funding sources for the shortfall, including Rainy Day Fund, ARPA funds, and impact fees. And really, what we've decided as a staff, as I consulted with our Public Works folks who work through the Capital Improvement Program, Rainy Day Funds really give us the best, best flexibility in terms of funding other projects. So that's what we're suggesting. And finally, I'd like to note that we are still out there applying for additional grant money. We don't have anything in hand yet, but my commitment to council and the Rainy Day Fund is to replenish the Rainy Day Fund with any additional grant monies that we receive. So, excuse me, so because we are on a tight timeline, staff are recommending to waive the second touch rule, and for you to direct staff to schedule the public hearing on this matter at the next meeting. If we schedule a third touch, we risk delaying the transaction, which we would like to close in early June. And we only have one more council meeting before we hope to close on that transaction. Thank you. Do I have any questions?
Other, other than the risk of delay, is there a risk to the actual contract?
Yes, we put a 40-day closing date in there, and it would push us, push us past that.
And what's the penalty for that?
We, I think the transaction that would, that could then be null, void.
Good, thank you.
This is very exciting. It was unexpected, it's exciting, and the city of Squim remains committed to outdoor park space. It's healthy for citizens, it's, it's a long-lasting legacy.
Kudos to Hannah Merrill and Public Works for, for pursuing this, and the support of the city manager, and the support of the council. It's much appreciated.
Brandon?
I'm ready to make a motion. I move to waive the second touch and direct staff to schedule a public hearing on this matter for the next meeting.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Vicki. It has been moved and seconded. Amy, would you do roll?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
At the risk of it being a stupid question.
No, no, no.
No stupid questions, Rachel.
So it, it, on the cover sheet, there's a mention that a public hearing is not required, but staff recommends to schedule a public hearing. So I'm curious, maybe that was a typo.
Oh, crap, did I, I clicked the wrong box, if that's the case.
Did you? Oh, no.
But I didn't print out that.
Do you want to come see it on my tablet real quick?
Yeah.
Okay, come here. For the record, she clicked the wrong box. Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome. Thank you for the clarification.
So we do need a public hearing?
Yes.
Well, let's have one.
Well, let's have one.
Thank you. Okay, Amy, it has been moved and seconded. Would you do roll call vote, please?
Mayor Janice?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Downer?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Aye.
Counselor Rutter?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you so much. We'll see you next time.
9E, agenda item, rental fees of Swisher Hall.
Regarding the last item, if I had my little sunshine suit on, I'd be doing a little sunshine dance. Again, for the record, Hannah Merrill, Parks and Events Manager, Public Works. This agenda item is regarding rental fees for Swisher Hall, and this is for the new rehearsal space, which is the only space that we're allowed to rent. The old space is a library now that is exclusive use for the Squim City Band. And we put forward a four-hour blocks for $40, and for recurring groups, that would be their cost. If it was a new group or a group that was bringing in attendees that were not part of the performance but audience, then we would request a $300 damage deposit, which would be refunded if there was no damage. But for recurring groups, like somebody that's, you know, using it over and over for an extended period of time, we would have a relationship with those groups. We, we would not worry about that damage deposit. And I wanted to speak to what Justin Canopel brought up, which is we have an agreement with a nonprofit, which is the Squim City Band, and due to their fundraising and their efforts to bring this Swisher Hall to fruition, the orchestra also had, you know, handed in some of that fundraising and support. And there were also a nonprofit that we were discussing having an agreement with them as well. So they would be under that same umbrella. We just haven't finalized the separate agreement with them. You've done the one today for the Squim City Band. We would like to also have an agreement with the Squim City Orchestra, and that would waive their fees and the student groups under them, their fees to rent the facility. And the only potential fees they might have is if, would be between them and the Squim City Band, if they were using equipment. In the past, they've used Squim City Band equipment, and they have an agreement of how they might want to exchange that use. But that would not be part of the city's, as that equipment belongs to the Squim City Band. But the facility itself, we are hoping to move that forward with that orchestra to have that same fee schedule. Does anyone have any questions?
Harmony? Oh, you look like Harmony, Vicki.
So will there be a period of time where they will be required to pay the, the four-hour fee?
No. Right now, we're, we're working under the agreement we had that we've just been working on from the past, and we're just keeping that in place. What we're not doing yet is we are not renting out the facility to groups that would newly be wanting to have access to the space until we have all of the security in place, keying in place, and the schedules from the Squim City Band and the orchestra, and the youth groups that are working, you know, as part of their entity. And when we have that all sorted out, that will then we move forward. But we need to have this in place before we can do any rentals at all.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Dan?
I move to direct staff to schedule a public hearing for the next available meeting and prepare a proposed ordinance.
I'll second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Amy, would you please roll call vote, call for roll call vote?
Mayor Janice?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Downer?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Aye.
Counselor Lowe?
Aye.
Counselor Rutter?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Hannah. The next and last item is Chapter 20.01 Amendments.
And Joel is on his way to the podium to give you some context.
Hello, counsel. Joel Dressel, building official, for the record. This is just a small amendment to Chapter 2001. Earlier this year, with the building code updates, we unintentionally exempted building and site construction permits from the whole chapter. So we fixed that, and, and then we also added some language to clarify the extension request process for payment of fees. And staff's recommending that you waive the second touch on this and direct staff to present an ordinance on the consent agenda at the next available council meeting. If there's any questions, be happy to answer any.
Okay, Joel, so the change would be, or the addition is, they need to give you 30 days' notice if they're not going to meet the deadline for paying it?
So the fees are required to be paid within 90 days. They just need to provide a written request prior to that, that due date. And as long as they meet, show that they've had an unforeseen financial hardship, you know, maybe whether it was maybe a medical condition, or who knows what it might be, the director could extend that additional 90 days.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
I'm ready to make motion. I move to waive the second touch on this matter and direct staff to present an ordinance on the consent agenda at the next available meeting.
Yes, is there anybody who's against this? Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Okay, the next city council meeting, regular council meeting is May 28th, 2024, 6:00 p.m.
So before we adjourn.
That's a Tuesday, just so everyone's on the same page. Yep. Yes, Brandon?
You threw me off.
Sorry.
Oh, so I, we switched up the order of the agenda to try to see if we could speed things up and get staff out of here at a decent hour. So tonight was kind of a fluke, but does anybody have an issue with the makeup, the order of the agenda?
It would be nice if, if the staff, I mean, they still had to stay to the end.
Well, it was kind of a fluke, because we took forever during our parts.
Well, usually we don't have three items on the council discussion.
Yeah, well, actually, we were just moving around and see how things flow. So if there's an issue, we want to move it back, that's fine. But that's, that's the reason why it's up there, there's time to see how, although, again, tonight was kind of.
Anybody have any strong feelings?
I liked it this way. It was not, I think that it's really helpful for the public, because they, then they get to hear all the hard work of Georgia and Malia, because then they go right after public comment. I, I like the new format. I, so, thank you.
Like I said, it shouldn't be this long in the future, but our topics could be dragged on.
Okay. Vicki has a question.
Any, Vicki?
I just want to say, I agree, I like the new format, and I think it gives us an opportunity to maybe address some public comments, too, and not make people wait until the end of the meeting, until we get to our discussion. So thank you for making the change.
I didn't even think of that. It's awesome. Thank you. Okay, I move we adjourn.
Seconded.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you. We're not voting on it either.